Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, we've got a student from Destrehan High School, Haley Gartrell, who'd like to offer a reflection. So if you don't mind standing, right after reflection, John Smith will lead us in the pledge.
As we come here today to close the school year, we come with nothing but thanks for Jesus's blessings, for the opening of a gorgeous performing arts center, for a new face stepping in to lead us, and for a woman closing a chapter and leaving a beautiful legacy behind. We've seen many changes this year, and we're grateful for your guiding hand in overseeing it all. We ask you to be with our leaders as they lead us in the right direction. We thank you for this beautiful day and for all of the opportunity that this district has to offer to its students. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Haley, I'd like to thank you for that reflection and congratulate you on finishing your freshman year at Destrehan and wish you good luck the rest of the way through. So thank you so much.[91.89][91.89](applause). I'd like to call St. Charles Parish School Board meeting for May 22, 2019, to order. Madam Secretary, let the record show that all board members are present, along with our superintendent, Ms. Felicia Gomez-Walker, and our executive secretary, Ms. Shelley Babino. Okay, first item on the agenda is 2.01, Resolution in Memory of Mr. Raymond Bynum. I'd ask Mr. Smith if he would read that, please.
Whereas Mr. Raymond Bynum served as a parish educator for 21 years in the St. Charles Parish public school system, be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein express to the family of the late Raymond Bynum his sincere sympathy in that time of sorrow, be it further resolved that a page in the May 22, 2019 minute books be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Bynum's family. I so move.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Robichaud. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please cast your vote. Okay. Okay, Madam Secretary, that motion passes.
Students. School system's students were honored as 2019 Cox Inspirational Student Heroes. Randa Abdallah from J.B. Martin Middle School.[231.34][231.34](applause). Kaden Gordon, R.K. Destrehan High School student is a National Merit finalist, Connor Fisk.[480.12][480.12](applause). Luling Elementary School students placed in the South Central Louisiana Human Services Authorities 2019 Art of Respect drawing contest. And the overall winner and calendar cover artist is Reniki Scott.[541.04][541.04](applause). Albert Cameron Middle School student was named to the District Seven Honor Choir, Teams. Destrehan High School Wildcat Robotics Team won the Arkansas Rock City Regional Competition and received the Engineering Inspiration Award with a $5,000 grant. The team was also a finalist at the Bayou Regional First Robotics Competition and received the Industrial Design Award. Here tonight is Coach Brian Young and many members of the robotics team as well.[630.32][630.32](applause). Y'all are gonna need to tighten up for the picture, possibly do more than one row.[662.82][662.82](laughter). comprised of both Destrehan and Honville students, won first place and the fan favorite award at the Louisiana Mississippi Color Guard and Percussion Circuit Championship. Director Sherry Mahler and any River Winds members, please come forward as well.[742.66][742.66](applause). the LMEA Regional Performance Assessment. Satellite Center Team Member placed third at the State National History Day Competition, Miranda Hall.[841.01][841.01](applause).
On behalf of the School Board, I'd like to congratulate all our recipients tonight. You exemplify what we try to do here in St. Charles Parish as leaders in your respective groups. So, thank you so much. I ask you to continue to do what you're doing, be leaders, be examples for everybody else. At this time, we're gonna take about a two-minute break. You're certainly welcome to stay for the business portion of tonight's meeting, but we'll give you an opportunity to get home and all the students can take care of that homework that they have to do.[891.22][891.22](laughter) Thank you.
I'd like to call the St. Charles Parish School Board meeting for May 22, 2019, back to order. First of all, admission of guilt here. I inadvertently told people that they can leave, but recognitions are not over. We have two very important recognitions left, so we'll continue with those. And I'm glad y'all didn't leave.[917.31][917.31](laughter). 3.02, Special Recognition Lead, St. Charles Parish Teacher Leader Academy. And I think we're gonna call on Mr. Pethey to come up and present that to us. Mr. Pethey, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Gomez-Walker and Board members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize these wonderful individuals tonight. According to former ASCD Executive Director Judy Seltz, "What happens in schools is more complex than ever and cannot be accomplished with strict division between administrators and teachers. The leadership and responsibility for student learning must be a collaborative effort. If teacher leaders can help change school culture so that teachers and principals collaborate to build a culture of learning, everyone benefits." In an effort to further develop the leadership skills of teacher leaders, LEED SCP Teacher Leaders Academy was born. The academy consisted of seven sessions and required participants to devote time to professional readings and attendance at Louisiana Department of Education Professional Learning Sessions. Participation in the academy provided a district-wide perspective on issues related to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. In addition, teacher leaders were able to share their opinions with colleagues, CNI staff, and board members. The ultimate goal of the academy was to help participants become more skilled teacher leaders. I can confidently say this goal was exceeded by the 32 individuals who participated in the academy. At this time, I will call the names of these outstanding teacher leaders. Please come to the front and remain there until all LEED SCP participants have been recognized, so a group picture can be taken. Certificates were distributed at a recognition ceremony prior to the board meeting. From Destrehan High School, Lee Baltazar.[1033.33][1033.33](applause). Brad Landash.[1038.33][1038.33](applause). Haley Muntz.[1044.33][1044.33](applause). From Honville High School, Megan Desauer.[1053.58][1053.58](applause). Rod Nocan.[1058.22][1058.22](applause). See, they're polite as well.[1067.72][1067.72](laughter). From Hurst Middle School, Amy Houston.[1072.01][1072.01](applause). Aubrey Hager.[1076.72][1076.72](applause). And Lauren Wagispak.[1082.51][1082.51](applause). From J.B. Martin Middle School, Brian Perisudi.[1090.22][1090.22](applause). Lauren Methern.[1095.22][1095.22](applause). And Wendy Truding.[1100.01][1100.01](applause). From Lakewood Elementary, Corey Weeks.[1106.33][1106.33](applause). From Luling Elementary, Danielle Claus.[1113.33][1113.33](applause). Jordan Vicner.[1118.22][1118.22](applause). And Tiffany Scott.[1123.01][1123.01](applause). New Sarpy Elementary, Chelsea Cooper.[1130.01][1130.01](applause). Emily Jimmison.[1135.01][1135.01](applause). And Kayla Mir.[1140.01][1140.01](applause). From Narco Elementary, Angel Bourgeois.[1146.01][1146.01](applause). RJ Viall Elementary, Chrissy Brown.[1153.01][1153.01](applause). R.K. Smith Middle School, Chase PT.[1160.01][1160.01](applause). Jennifer Green.[1165.01][1165.01](applause). And Waco Bickham.[1169.33][1169.33](applause). From Sheffner Elementary, Katie Young.[1176.33][1176.33](applause). From St. Rose Elementary, Heidi Freelue.[1183.33][1183.33](applause). And from the CNI Department, Tony Nassar.[1190.33][1190.33](applause). Carol Young.[1195.33][1195.33](applause). Heather Skiba could not be here, she had ballet with her daughter.[1203.01][1203.01](laughter) And Maggie Booz.[1205.33][1205.33](applause). Once again, thank you and congratulations for a wonderful year, and keep up the leadership work that you're doing at your schools.[1215.01][1215.01](applause).
Thank you, Mr. Pethey. Rochelle Tushard, External Relations Manager, Rochelle Narco, is with us tonight to recognize two of our teachers who were named as winners for the Shell Science Lab Regional Challenge. Ms. Tushard?
Thank you, President Nocan, Superintendent Felicia Gomez-Walker. It's a pleasure to be back again here to recognize excellence within the school system. In Shell's ongoing efforts to provide more robust and innovative science education and lab experiences in schools near our assets, we have once again partnered with the National Science Teachers Association to award science lab curriculum, materials, professional development to schools, and science teachers that best demonstrated their ability to improve science achievement for students. At Shell, we believe that learning and innovation go hand in hand, and by providing additional resources, this challenge helps support innovation as well as foster student excitement about science at an early age. The Shell Science Lab Regional Challenge offers prize packages for one elementary, one middle, and one high school near Shell assets. Winning schools receive science lab materials to improve science education, and science teachers receive that professional development to improve their content knowledge and instructional practices to inspire more students to pursue STEM. They will also have the opportunity to participate in the STEM Forum, which is being held in San Francisco, July 24 through 26. Tonight, we recognize the elementary and middle school from St. Charles Parish selected and their outstanding teachers. Each will receive a $10,000 prize package from the National Teacher Science Association, but tonight we have a certificate and a banner for them to display at their schools. So first, let me recognize Ethel Sheffner Elementary School, teacher Kristin Sermic, and Principal Vanessa Terry.[1402.51][1402.51](applause). And I would like to say that this is Lauren's second year receiving this recognition.[1454.42][1454.42](applause). We're really proud of this, two years in a row, so we hope to continue this tradition moving forward. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Shell Narco and in particular Rochelle Tushard for your support of our STEM initiative. And Rochelle, I'd like to invite you back monthly.[1513.01][1513.01](laughter) To our board meetings. Okay, you bring us joy. Thank you. And for our LEED SCP teacher leaders, again, thank you for what you do, thank you for taking up the challenge, and we look forward to some wonderful things from you guys. So thank you so much.[1533.01][1533.01](applause). Now, I'm gonna make an attempt and try this again.[1540.62][1540.62](laughter) Okay, we're gonna take a two-minute break, so that those that want to leave may leave. If you wanna stay for the business portion of tonight's meeting, you're certainly welcome to do so. Okay, we're now moving to the business portion of tonight's meeting. First item on the agenda, minutes for April 23, 2019, committee meeting, April 24, 2019, board meeting, and May 1, 2019, special board meeting. Move of approval?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mrs. Bernard. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Okay, Madam Secretary, please note for the record that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 4.02, Personnel Items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20, 2019, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting on the Board on Monday, May 20, which aligns with Goal B of our strategic plan.
Got a motion by Mr. Savoy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Suffren. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Okay, Madam Secretary, please note that our personnel items have been approved. Item 4.03, Board of Trustees for Ethel Sheffner Scholarship Fund. Members appointed to the Board of Trustees of the Ethel Sheffner Scholarship Fund serve terms of three-year duration. No time limit was set on the number of terms any one appointee can serve. It is necessary for the St. Charles Parish School Board to approve the appointment of Ms. Hope Barnhill and renew the appointment of Ms. Stephanie Ward for a term of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. St. Charles Parish School Board is the overseeing custodian of this trust fund, and members of the Board of Trustees must be approved by the School Board in order to award scholarships in conformity with set criteria and guidelines. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on May 20, 2019.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the appointment of Ms. Hope Barnhill and renew the appointment of Ms. Stephanie Ward to the Ethel Sheffner Board of Trustees for a period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Second. Motion by Mr. Suffren, second by Mr. Robichaud. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please cast your vote. Ms. Babino, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda is 4.04, Bid Acceptance Child Nutrition Program Bread and Bread Products. In order to have the best quality food at the most competitive price, the district sought bids for bread and bread products. The opening bid was held on Friday, April 12, 2019. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the bids submitted by Flowers Baking Company of New Orleans and Bread Biz Leidenheimer for bread and bread products at an approximate cost of $45,000.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Suffren, second by Mrs. Bernard. Is there any discussion?
I do have a question, maybe if Monique or Teresa could come up. And I noticed we're selecting two vendors. Do they provide different bread products? Do they provide different bread products?
Yes, so the, your question is, do, we have two different bread vendors.
Two different bread vendors.
So we, um, added our po'boy bread to the bid about two years ago, and so they're the only ones that can supply that for us. So it is a, you know, a local item.
Bread Biz is?
Bread Biz provides the Leidenheimer French bread for our roast beef po'boys.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, you might wanna.
You might wanna sit up.
You might wanna stay nearby.
Just in case. Okay, is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
We didn't discuss these items at Monday's committee meeting, so we may wanna, the Board may have some questions.
Okay, Madam Secretary, item 4.04 passes. Next item on the agenda, 4.05 Bid Acceptance Child Nutrition Program Supplies. In order to have the best quality supplies for the child nutrition program at the most competitive price, the district sought bids from five vendors. The bid opening was held on Friday, April 5th, 2019. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid submitted by Economical Janitorial for Child Nutrition Program Supplies at an approximate cost of $175,000.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Savoy. Is there any discussion?
I noticed we only had one bid, uh, and, and four, um, other vendors did not, um, submit a bid. Did they indicate any reason as to why they didn't submit, or? Because we only got one competitive bid, really.
Right. No, they, they did not, um, comment on that. I think last year we only received one as well. So we do send it out, and we do certainly want that competition, but Economical seems to be the, one of the only ones.
I just didn't know if they, uh, if they indicated as to why they wouldn't be submitting.
No, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Sufferin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Madam Secretary, that motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 4.06 Bid Acceptance Large Kitchen Equipment. In order to have well-equipped, efficient kitchens to prepare healthy school meals for students and staff, the district sought bids for large kitchen equipment. The bid opening was held on Friday, April 5th, 2019. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan. What is the Board's pleasure? Move of approval?
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mr. Oakwin. Just for the record, the approximate cost on, on this is $195,726. Any other discussion?
I think we got bids from, I wanna say, seven vendors, and I think five of the seven are receiving at least some portion of the, uh, there's no question, Ms. Brown, just, just making a comment for the Board's benefit. I think five of the seven vendors that did bid, I think, are getting at least part of the business.
Okay? Any other discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Madam Secretary, item 4.06 passes unanimously. Next item, 4.07 Bid Acceptance Small Cafeteria Equipment. In order to have well-equipped, efficient kitchens to prepare healthy, healthy school meals for students and staff, the district sought bids for small cafeteria equipment. The bid opening was held on Friday, April 5th, 2019. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval to accept the lowest bids for small cafeteria equipment as, as recommended, at an approximate cost of $7,335.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Oakwin, second by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please cast your vote. Okay, item 4.07 passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, 4.08 Request for Proposal Acceptance Child Nutrition Program Contracted Pizza and Delivery Service. In order to have the best quality pizza at the most competitive price, the district sought proposals for pizza and delivery service. This proposal opening was held on Friday, April 12th, 2019. Two proposals were received. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Move approval to accept the proposal from RPM Pizza Domino's for Child Nutrition Program Contracted Pizza Delivery Service at an approximate cost of $125,000.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mrs. Bernard. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
This is an annual contract, right, Ms. Brown? Seems like it comes up every week.
Them kids like their pizza.
Hey, Madam Secretary, please note that the children will have pizza. Passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 4.09 Bid Acceptance Child Nutrition Program Milk and Milk Products, Frozen Food Products, and Processed Food Products. In order to have the best quality food at the most competitive price, the district sought bids for food products. The bid opening was held on Friday, April 12th, 2019. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the lowest bid submitted by Borden's Dairy for Milk and Milk Products and Diamond Food Distributors and S&amp;W Wholesale Foods for frozen food products and Cook Me Something Mister Diamond Food Distributors and S&amp;W Wholesale Foods for Processed Food Products at an approximate cost of $1,233,086.90.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Sufferin, second by Mr. Oakwin. Is there any discussion? Hey, Madam Secretary, item 4.09 passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, 4.10 Fiscal Agency Bids for Banking, July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2022. The current fiscal agent agreement with Capital One ends on June 30th, 2019. Requests for proposals were solicited from four local banks. Only two banks choose to submit a bid, and it was received on April 24th, 2019. This item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the bid submitted by Capital One to serve as the Board's fiscal agent for the period July 1, 2019, through June 30th, 2022. And the net revenue for that is $65,519.
Got a motion by Mr. Sufferin, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Oakwin. Is there any discussion? Okay, please cast your vote. Madam Secretary, 4.10 passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Accounts Payable for the Month of April, 2019. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, May 20th, 2019, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of April 2019 in the total amount of $4,105,441.16.
Motion by Mr. Sufferin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bernard. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please cast your vote. Madam Secretary, that motion passes unanimously. This concludes the business portion of tonight's meeting. We'll enter the closing section. At this time, any chair of the standing committee would like to give a report at this time, please do so.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, uh, May 20th, 2019. We had one item on our agenda for committee meeting only, and that was Mr. Pathey presenting to our Board, um, a report on accountability indices for high schools. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, May 20th, and we covered nine items. We had a busy evening. In fact, nine of our 11 business items tonight were from the Finance and Audit Committee. All nine of those items came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. Those nine items were the Board of Trustees for the Ethel Sheffner Scholarship Fund, bid acceptance for the Child Nutrition Program Bread and Bread Products, bid acceptance for Child Nutrition Program Supplies, bid acceptance for large kitchen equipment, as well as small kitchen equipment, request for proposal acceptance for the Child Nutrition Program Contracted Pizza and Delivery Service, uh, bid acceptance for the Child Nutrition Program Milk and Milk Products, frozen food products, and processed foods products, and the fiscal agency bids for banking, July 1, 2019, through June 30th, 2022, and lastly, the accounts payable for the month of April, 2019. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Uh, Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting met Monday night on the 20th, and we had two items on the agenda. One was personnel items that we dispensed with tonight, and also informational item which was not moved by the Board from the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin, I mean, Mr. Savoy.
It's compliment. Makes you younger.
Not much.
Okay, Capital Provis Committee had, had, uh, met on Monday. We had one informational item only, and that was presented by Mr. John Rome on termite and termite, uh, contract, uh, something that would be following up, uh, during the summer. So that concludes the Board's report. Madam, uh, Superintendent, we'd love to have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The school system makes a practice of naming administrators in a very timely fashion so that we can be thoroughly prepared to start the next school year. And so a combination of administrative selections were, um, last month as well as this month, and we'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate them and also introduce our new administrators and their assignments for 2019, 2020. I'd like to invite Dr. Ken Ortling to acknowledge this group of leaders at this time. Dr. Ortling.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Board. Good evening. It's my pleasure to certainly recognize our 2019, '20 administrative appointments, and certainly we look forward to working with these outstanding leaders. We'll start with, uh, Albert Hammond Middle School, Principal LaSalle Porter. New Sarpy Elementary, Principal Rebecca Mathurn. Norco Elementary, Principal Shannon Diode. St. Rose Elementary, Assistant Principal Antoinette Nasser. Hanville High School, Assistant Principal Victoria Preu. JB Martin Middle School, Assistant Principal Angela Butler. RK Smith Middle School, Assistant Principal Corey Weeks. Allemans Elementary, Assistant Principal Angel Bourgeois. Mimosa Park Elementary, Assistant Principal Constance Alphonse. RJ Viel Elementary, Principal Christina Mullins. The Executive Director of Equity and Student Support, Ms. Tamika Green. The Executive Director of Elementary Schools, Ms. Angel Bavin. The Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Ms. Erin Grange.
Thank you, Mr. Ortling. Bunch of fine-looking, um, administrators. I'd like you all, if your name was called, to stand up one more time as a group. The school district will hold a summer program for high school students who failed courses or who passed their courses but failed the associated end-of-course or LEAP 2025 test. High school students participating in this program may earn credits and meet state testing requirements for graduation. The district will also hold a summer academic program for fourth and eighth grade students who did not earn a score of basic or higher on their ELA LEAP assessments. This program will provide students with remediation so that they are better prepared for the next school year. Parents are urged to enroll their children in these programs if they are notified by the district that they are eligible to participate. Please contact your child's school for more information. We are very excited to reveal our new Learn With Us Bus. This is a joint project between the United Way and the St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The bus will serve as a mobile family education resource for parents. The schedule and locations will be communicated once finalized and will begin August the 13th. We also had students that helped us to design the interior of the bus so that it would be very functional as the bus travels from community to community, and they also designed a special wrap, so the bus will be very, very noticeable as it, um, goes through our community. So look for our Learn With Us Bus. Next, this is a reminder that tomorrow, Thursday, May 23rd, will be the last day of school for students. Through the next couple of months, when students are out of school, we will ask all community members to drive carefully and to take every precaution to keep our children safe. Also, schools and central office will be closed on Memorial Day, Monday, May 27th. We will also begin a four-day work week schedule from the week of May 27th until July 22nd. There will be a lot of activity going on this summer, and we're very excited for the summer, even more excited for next year. On behalf of the Board and the school system, I would like to wish everyone an enjoyable, restful, and safe summer. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ready? Motion adjourned. Got a motion by Mr. Robichaud.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Board meetings adjourned.